Good evening. It's seven o'clock. The meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Lesbrunz, Cascade Supervisor. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Treasurer Pierce.
Here.
Trustee Castle.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Here.
Clerk Slater. Here. Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Here. Please rise if possible for the Pledge of Allegiance. Article three, Approval of Agenda.
Move to approve. Support by Shipley.
Quick comment. At the last meeting, I mentioned the excess dam funds that the township generates from income from the electricity of the Cascade Dam, putting that on this week's agenda, this meeting's agenda. I'm going to hold off on that. We have information. I still plan on doing it, but I think it's an important issue that the entire, we're part of the greater ecosystem and for the long-term benefits for the whole Grand River watershed of which we're a part. I think it would be helpful to combine that with a committee, both associations, but that represents kind of the olive cascade and that focuses more on long-term solutions rather than kind of piecemealing short-term handouts. So that will come. Thanks for your patience. And other than that, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, we have no presentations tonight. Article five, public comments. Now is the time for anyone to comment on anything on tonight's agenda with the exception of anything set for public hearing. Please, if possible, come to the podium and speak loudly into the microphone, introduce yourselves, and please try to respect the three-minute time limit. Mr. Whitley?
I really like, I like the sign. You don't have to be the bad guy all the time.
That's the goal.
Large sign there. Yes. Just for housekeeping, under the the facts sections for both of the SAD there, it talks about the approval at today's meeting, what really was September 8th meeting, and both of those share that same opening part there. So that's just a bit of housekeeping. The, the last minutes, I was, I'm glad that you talked about the revenue sharing thing because I looked in the minutes for today and I didn't see them in last September 8th minutes. And so I was, I was concerned when they weren't in the minutes and they weren't on the agenda, that, that, you know, the conversation was like, did that really take place? And I do appreciate you acknowledging, you know, that, that going forward. So part of it is just, you know, just support that, you know, working with the township is not a conflict of interest. It's a shared interest. And we have things like, you know, the, the drawdown coming up. And as the owner of the dam and you have the contract with the operator, we're kind of off on the side here, but everything worked smoothly for 50 years. And now all of a sudden, I don't know whether it's COVID people that want to do something, but we have, you know, extra enforcement associated with the state. And we certainly are going to need the township's support in trying to move forward with that. So like I say, shared interests and partnerships, I'm all for that. Congratulations on, you know, getting going there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any virtual public comments?
Any of our Zoom participants, please raise your hand at this time. If you are on the phone, use star nine and we'll wait just a few moments. Supervisor Lesbrunz, it doesn't appear that there's anyone else.
Thank you. Article six, Approval of Consent Agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with one correction. In the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting minutes of August 11th, under Article four, I believe the date should be, fee should be implemented January 1, 2022. Just want to make that correction.
Support.
That's a motion by Clerk Slater, supported by Trustee Shipley, to approve the consent agenda with the amendment. She mentioned Article four. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article seven, we'll separate items A and B because Article C requires a roll call as it's a budget amendment. So any motion or discussion for the 2021 payroll, payables, transfers, and financial reports?
Move to approve. Support again.
It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Shipley, to approve items A and B, financial actions. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, the second quarter 2021 budget amendment. Any questions or comments for discussion?
I think it was all previously discussed during the meeting.
Motion?
Shipley makes motion to approve. Support.
It's a motion by Trustee Shipley, supported by Trustee Castle, to approve the second quarter 2021 budget amendments. All in favor? Or Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Clerk Slater?
Yes.
Supervisor Lesbrunz?
Yes. Motion carried. Article eight, we have no unfinished business tonight. Article nine, new business. First, item 99, 2021, Consider Amendment to Rebal Development PUD Ordinance for the Construction of a New Car Wash and Coffee Shop Located at 6390 and 6420 28th Street. Good evening, Mr. Hillbrans.
Good evening, if you Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Would you prefer to do the introduction now and then hold public hearing? Or do you want to do public hearing first?
I'd leave it up to the board. I'm okay doing either.
Why don't we hear from you so that the public can hear as much as information before?
Sure, that'd be great. I haven't been to one of these meetings in a while. I think I can use the dot cam here to get those plans up through everyone, I believe.
You've been doing a good job.
Thank you. All right. So in your packet here, you should have the application and site plan for the construction of a new car wash and drive-up coffee shop at 6390 28th Street, as well as the proposed amendment to the Rebal Development PUD in which that car wash and coffee shop will be located. This project will involve the combination of 6390 and 64 20 28th Street, as well as this small abandoned right-of-way between them. So there was previously a Pizza Hut located on 6390 28th Street and a motel located at 6420 28th Street. The applicant's requesting final plan approval to amend the existing PUD ordinance to allow for the car wash and coffee shop and to include that parcel that was previously 6420 28th Street within the PUD. So this lot is located on the south side of 28th Street, a little west of Thorn Hills Avenue. This plan here is a little unique in that both buildings will be located on one parcel. The planning commission decided to allow this since it'll be located in a PUD. And there were two buildings previously, previously existing on the site, each one on one parcel. There was some concern about what would happen if the coffee shop was not successful. So there was a line included in the PUD amendment that required that the coffee shop building be removed if it is vacated for a period of 18 months or longer. The applicant did agree to that condition. The proposed car wash would be approximately 5,240 square feet. The coffee shop would be approximately 664 square feet. Can be totaled 32 parking spaces, 12 of which will be vacuums on the site. The plans have been reviewed by our township engineer, whose comments are included in your, our engineer's letter. You'll see there are a number of amendments being proposed in the PUD ordinance, and those are included there in your packet as well. The planning commission reviewed these plans and held a public hearing on this matter at their July 19 meeting and has recommended approval of both the site plan and the amendment to the PUD ordinance. At this time, staff are also recommending final plan approval with the six conditions that are listed in my memo that's included in your packet.
Thank you. Any questions for Leonard Hillbrans?
Just a comment. It's nice to see that the property is being rapidly redeveloped. As you know, vacant property sits around for a while and becomes nice or looking forward to additional businesses within the township. That's all I hope to say.
Brian, I read through the engineer's report on water retention. They seem to be very thorough. I'm sure, you know, it's such a hot topic the last five years. And knowing there's a car wash, there's obviously a lot of water. So is that, has that really been thoroughly vetted, you feel?
I believe so. I didn't get any sense of extra concern or anything from our engineer, and they were confident in the letter they provided there that stormwater should be accounted for in the plans that the applicant provided.
I just wondered if there was any additional discussion at the planning commission level because it seemed to be very thorough. I was very comfortable with the report.
There was, there was a little bit concern of where water might be running off the site. Nothing major in any way. And the planning commission felt comfortable with our engineer's letter.
Okay, one of the reasons, looking back at history, why I mention this is because when the apartment development, back to the south, was developed, there was a lot of concern that a lot of runoff went from there down to the Thorn Apple River via, you know, where Sentinel Point is right now. And that, you know, I don't know if it would ever run that way. I don't see how that would be possible, but I know in the past, there was a lot of concern about that. That was probably 20, 25 years ago. So that's why I thought there might be some, a lot of things brought up at the planning commission.
Sure. Yeah, I didn't hear that specific concern brought up.
Yeah, one other question. Hey, Brian, at some of the other car washes, several car washes that I've gone to, the water that runs down onto the roadway can become slippery with wax and soaps and all that. Is this new facility going to be downgrade from 28th Street? That's, that's quite a bit to fill if they're, if they're going to be up to grade or above.
No, that's a good question. And I believe in this design here, and I may let the applicant speak a little bit to this more, I don't believe there'll be much water, if any, leaving that building for their design.
There'd be an awful lot of fill for that to be up to the level of 28th Street.
I might let them confirm that if they, by comments.
That's all I have. Promise.
Would the applicant like to speak or have any comments? Answer questions? Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. My name is Bob Morrissey, applicant. I just want to say thank you for your time tonight. Really appreciate it. Appreciate all the time Brian's put into this project with us and brought some smart people with me. They answer all the hard questions. Have Doug Solzenberg from Excel Engineering here and James Morgan, our land planner. So what questions do you have for us?
Oh, my first question that I was just curious about was the, the level that the car wash will be exiting onto 28th Street. So it's going to be uphill, level, or slightly downhill like most car washes are?
Do you want to?
Yeah.
From the sidewalk at 28th Street, it actually slopes towards the site away from 28th Street very gently. So there will be a significant, significant amount of fill that will be placed in that northeast corner to bring that site up to, up to that height.
All right. But there won't be any amount of discharge from the cars. By the time the cars get to 28th Street, they're going to be fairly drip dry. Thank you.
When do resident, or when can residents expect the car wash to be up and running?
If we get approval for this tonight, then we're hoping to be washing cars by the end of May. So that would be the plan.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, everyone. I'm moving, make a move to go into a public hearing?
Support.
It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Castle, to open the public hearing. Any comments from the public on this issue? Oh, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We are now in public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment? May do so? I think everyone's wondering what the unlimited monthly rate will be, but I'm trying to. Okay. I wasn't asking for me, but.
Supervisor Lesbrunz, I'm going to give our Zoom participants a chance to make any comments they wanted to during this public hearing. Please raise your hand. Star nine on your phone. Supervisor Lesbrunz, at this point, there's no one.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion, also public hearing, support.
It's a motion by Trustee Castle, supported by Trustee Shipley, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, amendment or consideration of the amendment to the Rebal Development for this PUD. Any discussion or emotion?
Shipley makes motion to approve the amendment to the PUD.
The staff's conditions.
Oh, one of the staff recommendations. Absolutely, yes.
Support.
It's a motion by Trustee Shipley, supported by Trustee Castle, to approve the amendment to the Rebal Development PUD ordinance with the staff recommendations incorporated. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Clerk Slater?
Yes.
Supervisor Lesbrunz?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you for coming and welcome to Cascade. Item 100, 2021, Resolution Establishing the Ad hoc Leroe Lake Special Assessment District Number One Committee, Specifying Its Duties and Covering Other Matters. Is there discussion or emotion?
I have a question.
Okay.
On the memo page from Ben, it mentions that one township board member will be on the committee. And I'm assuming if that board member's not reelected, that person will automatically be reappointed. Another board member will be reappointed, correct? Thank you.
I believe it's, I thought I read somewhere, yeah, committee members will be appointed for a three-year term. So I think if that were the case, Sue, they weren't reelected, the three years would be up and you'd have to appoint somebody else.
Right.
A comment. I think even if they were reelected, if, but their term wouldn't expire with their board term. So it would have to be a reappointment or a new person.
Manager Swayze, did you want to make any comments?
Yeah, so we all know that we went through the special assessment process. So we don't need to rehash that. So the recommendation throughout the process was that if it was approved, we establish these ad hoc committees for both the SADs in order to basically give guidance to the township board on making decisions about how that is made. And that's essentially how it was set up. This resolution was prepared by former special counsel Cliff Bloom. You know, so if it's established, they will have the purpose of advising the township board regarding various aspects of the SAD. The resolution does say the committee will be responsible to comply with all aspects of the Open Meetings Act. So that would conform to the recent updates we made to our committee structure. For the Leroe Lake one, because there's only 23 residents in this, it would be compromised of one township board member and two residents in the SAD, and the township manager or his or her designate would serve as an ex officio member. Again, committee members will be appointed for three-year terms. We talked about that. Committee will meet a minimum of twice a year and make recommendations to the township board for yearly activities on or before February 1st of each year. That may, I think we all got a communication from the River Association recommending that maybe those suggestions be made before then. So I think that's certainly something that can, can happen as well.
And this is to just establish the ad hoc, ad hoc committee for these SADs. But it's my understanding from one of the association members that they need to have RFPs out for state, for basically for weed control by December 15th. So the township will make every effort within either the next meeting or the following meeting to make those appointments so that they have plenty of time to get together. Does anyone want to reference the two amendments to the, the ad hoc committees? Language?
That's for the, that request was for the Thorn Apple. This is for the Leroe Lake. So with that, I, I motion, I make a move, make a motion that we recommend and approve the resolution establishing the ad hoc Leroe Lake Special Assessment District Number One Committee, specifying its duties and covering other matters, and that the members of the committee be selected by the township manager with final approval made by the board.
I don't support that because the manager doesn't make policy or appointments. The board does.
Right.
The manager doesn't. The supervisor does in all other cases. We don't have staff that doesn't live in Cascade making appointments to our ad hoc committees.
Oh. I thought, I thought that that.
That's a board decision.
So then I move that we do the, that we approve the resolution establishing the ad hoc Leroe Lake Committee with, with the members being approved by the board.
Support.
It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Castle, to approve the resolution as written, establishing the ad hoc Leroe Lake Special Assessment District Number One Committee. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Clerk Slater?
Yes.
Supervisor Lesbrunz?
Yes. Item 101, 2021, Resolution Establishing the Ad hoc Thorn Apple River Associate, or excuse me, River Special Assessment District Number One Committee, Specifying Its Duties and Covering Other Matters. Discussion or motion?
Shipley. As I say, this is the same. I move to approve this as well. The resolution established the ad hoc committee for the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District. But in addition, they've, the request is for a township board member and four residents, and that at least one resident be a current member of the Thorn Apple Cascade Thorn Apple River Association or a designate of the Board of Directors of the Cascade Thorn Apple River Association per the request by the association. And then final approval is based upon the board.
Support.
Does that include the email or that the, the request put in the email?
Yes, that's the request that they put in here.
Great, thank you.
At least one member of the committee shall also be a member of the township board, but one of the residents be a current member or designate of the Board of Directors of the Cascade Thorn Apple River Association.
Great. So that was a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Shipley, to adopt the Resolution Establishing the Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District Number One Ad hoc Committee with the modification regarding the committee membership as set forth in the CRTA memorandum dated March, it was dated March 23rd, 2021, but then we updated it. Manager Swayze?
So just a point of clarification, is the intent for the board to select somebody that is in that, that association? Or is the intent for the association to put forth somebody to serve on that committee?
The intent is for the association to put forth that person, but the final approval is made by the, by the board. And, and, and that's only for the one member, the one of the four.
And normally, we wouldn't do this, but since we've got CTRA members who've worked so hard on this, do you have any, could you clarify for us, please? We just not get it right.
I don't think it matters who picks the person. I mean, if, as long as there's representation from the river board, I think that was the, the goal that we had originally discussed with Manager Swayze and your predecessor early on. So as long as we've got a somebody that's representing the boards, because the board's getting all the communication from the people of the river, we just need a way to get that information back to the ad hoc committee so that it can be implemented in any recommendations they make to you.
Okay.
So as long as there's communication with the board about who that person is, I think that's all that needs to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight, too. Just because this slope doesn't look that slippery.
No, check quickly, 53 to Sequoia. The, the packet doesn't say anything about board, and there's been a lot of discussion about board. And I think that's the more appropriate thing because of what, you know, Scott said about the, the board essentially being a funnel for a lot of the information. Because if you get four members that are residents with frontage, one of them is going to have paid 50 bucks and they will be a member of the association, but they would not necessarily be a board member. That would be sort of privy to that funneling type of thing. And so I think the inclusion of the board aspect of it is the critical thing that, that says that, that yes, it is really part of a, a representation and not just that one person paid $50.
Makes sense. So I think Trustee McDonald's, the language set forth that he read should cover that.
Yes, specifically what the request was. Let me just verbatim. The remaining members of the committee, which are the residents, shall be property owners within the Special Assessment District, and at least one of these members shall be a current member or designate of the Board of Directors of the Cascade Thorn Apple River Association, a 501(c)(7) corporation, if applicable at the time of appointment.
Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Supervisor Lesbrunz?
Yes.
Can I just make one?
Yes.
I would highly recommend that we don't use the term property owners, that we use the term residents.
Good idea. Okay, I clarify this for my motion to add the word residents instead of property owner.
Thank you.
And Jen, you support that still?
Oh, absolutely.
Just want to make sure, because you were the support.
Everyone ready?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Clerk Slater?
Yes.
Supervisor Lesbrunz?
Yes. Motion carried. So the appointments will follow within the next meeting, two meetings. Appreciate your help with that. Item 102, 2021, Agreement to Purchase Property at 2965 Y Cliff Drive Southeast with Unity Spiritual Community Church. Discussions or introduction?
Yep. So over the past nine months, we've had several conversations as a board about the purchase of the property at 2965 Y Cliff, we all know as the Church on the Hill property. So the latest conversations have revolved around a partnership with the Unity Spiritual Community Church. They're currently located in Ada, and they're looking to relocate to the facility on this property. The church is in the process of selling its building right now. In fact, I think that might have actually already occurred. So under the proposed partnership, the Unity Church would be, would purchase the entire 2965 Y Cliff property, and then the church would sell the undeveloped portion of the property, approximately 1.86 acres to the township for the purpose of a public park. So I included some information, including the proposed buy and sell agreement in your packet. The proposed agreement's been developed at the direction of the township board. Some of the highlights include a purchase price of $300,000, agreement language that a recordable right of first refusal agreement be drafted in the case the church chooses to sell their portion of the property at a later date, and an agreement that a recordable sharing agreement will be drafted to allow the township to use parking facilities for the park, a shared entrance, shared sign use. And then there's a contingency that the property must be split properly. So those are all things we talked about. The listed purchase price for the subject property is $300,000. The seller has requested that the township be responsible for various closing costs as well, and those are in the, in the agreement. So a budget has been prepared and approved tonight for $310,000 for the purchase from the general fund. I would note that the township board may at a later date, but no later than December 31st, 2021, choose to reallocate the purchase to find, to another fund if the use of the property is compatible. So the initial funds will be taken out of the general fund. If at some point the township board determines that it's appropriate to take it out of a different fund, we would be, do that through a budget amendments as well. With that, the, in your packet is the agreement to buy, sell, real estate for your consideration.
Trustee Castle?
I've got several questions. One, on the very first page of the buy-sell agreement, we determined that parties close not later than September 21st. We can't meet that. That was yesterday. That's a problem. On page two, under warranty deed, at the closing, the seller shall transfer the real estate to buyer, us. real estate to buyer, uh, us, uh, by warranty deed, uh, and subject to permitted encumbrances. I'm okay with that as long as it's not without warranty, does that mean, I don't know who drafted this, but does that mean without warranty that it encompasses because easements, restrictions, abuse of record would be exceptions and, and wouldn't be covered by the warranty deed, so I'd like to know clarification of that. Also, when we met, uh, I had suggested that the owners, uh, the seller pay, uh, the owner buyers' policy of title insurance, owner's policy, and, uh, then the representation was that, and had thought that that would be a standard buy, sell agreement and on page four of the agreement, it says, uh, at buyer's cost, so that's our cost. Lastly, the commitment for title insurance is only for a hundred thousand dollars and was it three or three ten that we paid?
Ben, the property would be three hundred, so the budget amendment was three ten to include some of those closing costs.
Okay, so the policy of owner's first boss and title insurance should be for three hundred thousand, not one hundred, uh, it also is, uh, subject to the whole parcel, so it's not been split, so the title insurance would have to be, uh, reissued, but it should be issued for three hundred and it should be at the, uh, at the seller's expense. So those are the corrections or things that I have noted, uh, that I find defective in the purchase agreement. So I don't think we should approve it as is.
Ben, would we have to table this to make those corrections or could we approve it with contingent upon the corrections that Jim has just stated?
Yep, so, you know, a couple of them are pretty easy, uh, the closing date, you know, we can kind of pick whenever, um, so that's not, not an issue. Uh, that's really more for the, um, uh, the seller than it is for us, title insurance, I believe, I, I agree, can be three hundred thousand dollars, I think we can, uh, make an amendment that that has to, uh, be set, um, I don't know about the language without warranties, I can certainly get clarification on that, um, but, um, or if you wanted to approve it, uh, without that, uh, taking that language out, that's, that's certainly fine. And then, so the, the seller's costs, uh, that was a request from, or the, uh, the buyer taking on some of those costs was a request at the seller because they have to go through two transactions, so they have to buy the whole parcel and then go through another transaction to sell us our half.
But they paid first.
So they were asking us to help participate in those costs, uh, but if the board decided that, no, it's normal for the, uh, seller to cover those costs, you know, you can certainly approve the agreement with that language changed.
I would be fine with all the amendments and then just the last one taking up, keeping it as is. The church has been very, um, easy to work with.
They've been, I gotta admit, they've been wonderful, um, very cooperative. I spent a lot of time with them and, and every meeting, they were polite, courteous, wanting to be a partner with us in the neighborhood.
So I would agree to all the amendments, but the last one I would keep as is.
Which means we pay our portion of the.
We pay for the owner's policy.
Would you be good with that, Jim? If they've already paid for it once for the whole parcel and then just, so we, we don't pay for that.
They're gonna pay for the cost to get it split.
It has to be split.
It's their responsibility, they have to split it.
They're the owners who are splitting it.
That contingency would remain in there, so for some reason, so we're the agency that determines that, but if for some reason we determine that it can't be split from a legal perspective, um, then the, the agreement would be null and void because that's a contingency up until the time the property is actually split.
How long would that take to occur?
Oh, Brian left, uh, it's, it doesn't take very long, um, less than a week.
So we should have a closing date, give ourselves time, um, to close by a certain date, disagreeable.
From, from my perspective, for the, the purposes here, unless you guys are particularly worried about it, I would change that language just to be closing, to be determined.
I'm okay with that.
Typically makes a motion to, uh, huh, approve the agreement purchase with the amendments and changes as.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the agreement to purchase property at twenty nine sixty five Y Cliff Drive Southeast with the Unity Spiritual Community Church, taking into account, um, amendments to that agreement, we'll say, as summarized by manager Swayze. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes, Supervisor Lessbrun.
Yes, motion carried, thank you trustee McDonald for all your work behind the scenes on that. Item one zero three, twenty twenty one, award for construction manager services for fire station number one.
So at our July twenty eighth township board meeting, the township board approved the issuance of an RFP for a construction manager, uh, services for fire station number one, so an at-risk construction manager holds all the construction contracts for the project, uh, though they're not allowed to self-perform any of the construction services, and so essentially how that works is our contract would be with the construction manager, the construction manager is then responsible for contracting and overseeing all of the subcontractors on the project, um, and the RFP was very clear, they were not allowing any self-performance of the construction services. So the RFP was let on August twentieth, it was sent directly to six local construction companies as well as being advertised on the builder's exchange, the bids were due on September tenth and we received seven bids, including bids from AVB, CD Barnes, Erdhard, Orion, Rockford, Triangle, and Visser Brothers. So the bids reviewed by both the fire station design team, which also includes Williams Architects, uh, and the Public Safety Advisory Committee, uh, so based on that review, the committee scheduled interviews for two of the respondents, uh, and those, uh, reviews, those interviews happened yesterday, uh, so I did provide with you, uh, supplemental, report based on those interviews, uh, so they held their interviews with the two respondents, Triangle and Erdhard, uh, they did choose those respondents, uh, based on the quality of their RFP response, their experience in the field, the reference checks and the cost of their proposals, each company had a one-hour interview slot, uh, the first interview consisted, uh, the first half of the interview consisted of a presentation from the company and the second half consisted of questions from the Public Safety Advisory Committee members, chief majors, myself, and Williams architect Mark Bushhouse. I think the committee agreed that each of the, um, companies were impressive with their responses, uh, but the committee did unanimously recommend Triangle to the township board for their award, uh, so the committee's recommended Triangle due to their experience of the project team, I would note that the site superintendent, uh, the person that would be responsible for being on site forty hours a week and overseeing the construction, is also a paid-on-call firefighter with the city of Greenville, uh, which we thought was a great experience for somebody that was going to be overseeing the, uh, the project, uh, so they certainly rose above in that section, uh, they have a ton of experience in the public sector, so understand the nuances that come with, uh, running a public sector construction, uh, project, uh, they emphasized again and again and over and over, uh, the importance of communication, uh, and then, uh, last but not least, they had the most advantageous cost proposal. Sure, remember the, of the committee, I would like to weigh in on that as well, uh, we also have chief majors here, uh, we have, uh, members from Triangle here and we do have, uh, Williams architect Mark Bushhouse on Zoom as well, uh, so the fee calculations for a pre-construction service fee, uh, was just short of nineteen thousand dollars, uh, their construction management fee, uh, is two point five percent of the construction costs, uh, which would come to a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars if it was a seven million dollar, uh, construction cost project, and the general conditions for, uh, the contract would be two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, which would bring the total to four hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars for the price.
I would like to hear from chief majors on his expectations of this project as we're going forward.
Can I?
I told you.
Same.
Thank you, I appreciate it, um, yeah, can I answer any questions, uh, that you have, we were very excited with Triangle, I could say that, uh, they were a personal favorite of mine, um, I was glad to see that the Public Safety Advisory Committee agreed as well as, uh, Williams Architects, so, uh, Brienne Pishford is here, uh, from Triangle, if any questions specifically for her, um, we look forward to, uh, a good process, we are, we have a kickoff meeting scheduled for next Thursday, the thirtieth, uh, so we're, we're excited, I don't think anybody's any more excited than I am, but I appreciate it.
Chief, with all the things going on with this project and you having to move in temporary quarters, you still think it's feasible that we're gonna demolish that old beast, uh, before winter sets in?
That, well, I, I think we can if need be, uh, if Triangle needs us to demolish to get started on, on some of the dirt work, we can certainly be out of there, um, this fall, if they don't need it to be demolished, I think it would be advantageous for us to stay there as long as possible, just based on a response, uh, it's a better area to respond from to meet NFPA seventeen ten standards, so if they don't need us to, to tear down until, you know, February or March, we're okay with that, too, uh, just from a response and taking care of the community.
And I'm guessing that she'll keep the board informed on status of that project.
Absolutely.
That's your job, Adam.
Appreciate it.
I don't know, Adam, if you know this, but, um, is it anticipated that we'll have an owner's policy or title insurance on this? Maybe Triangle knows, I'm curious as to what you're gonna do, you're acting as a general, right? You're gonna hire all the subs? Okay, so who's gonna get the lien waivers on the draws as we pay out the money?
We will.
And will there be title insurance on that? So if a lien does get placed, township's protected?
Typically with that, um, depending on what nature we want to go through, whether we want to bond the project, each individual subcontractor looking into the subcontractor default insurance, um, but typically with the waivers, the bond then address that issue.
The bonds will, you'll get, okay, so you do either bonds or title insurance sometimes?
Typically, we could have not carry the title insurance, we do a bond or a subcontract and default insurance, maybe we're speaking the same language, but it's, um, we don't get a title insurance.
So you'll ensure that township, when the building is complete, it's free of any liens, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Question for chief. So I looked through almost all of the bids and I don't know what to look for like you do, after a while, they all kind of look good, they all look fine, whatever, so I want, I just would like to know from your perspective, what was the quality that set this company apart?
Yeah, absolutely, um, as you know, I'm not a construction expert, uh, I'm a fire chief, but, uh, what I did look for was the, out of their proposal, which one was, was easy to follow, which one made the most sense, uh, from a communication standpoint, are we gonna be able to, i- if it was hard to follow, then it was probably hard for us to, I kind of go through the process with them as a teammate, um, I'll be honest with you, they leaned on our building department, so they had nothing but lowing, uh, reviews with Triangle, so that helped, uh, they, they said that they're always on point, um, so that helped, um, called a lot of references and I talked to a lot of people and it was a hundred percent positive, uh, with Triangle and, and, uh, so just kind of, as a whole, that all stood out and again, having a firefighter as the superintendent, as the, as a person that's gonna be there every day, uh, kind of putting out those little fires, um, I, I appreciated the, uh, common ground and, and shared language and so, a lot of things, they had a site-specific, uh, Cascade safety plan, they had, uh, they had a lot of things that just stood out, um, that just put them just right at the top.
Thank you.
And I had a couple of things sitting on the committee board there. So most of the companies that put in a, uh, a response had a lot of additional fees and they really scared us, Triangle didn't. Furthermore, Triangle was the only one that has a history of almost hundred percent of their projects coming back one to three percent below estimated cost, we heard from one of the contractors that said, well, you won't be getting any money back, if you budgeted for this amount, you're gonna lose that amount, that kind of put a red flag up in some of our faces.
Sure.
So that's a couple of things that the committee took into consideration.
Thank you. Trustee. Treasure Pierce.
Just want to comment, this year we haven't had a lot of unanimous decisions, this one we did.
That's encouraging, yeah, it was nice to see.
I just want to add one thing that I, I think that, uh, the committee with chief on board, uh, put together, I would call it the A-team, we've got fabulous architect and now I'm confident that we have picked the right construction manager. Both of those companies pride themselves on coming in on budget, so once that budget's set, that's the number they pride themselves on hitting and I don't think they cut corners to do that. I had a good feeling about both companies, I think we started off rough back in January, but I think we really put together a good team, so I'm pleased.
The public, the community won't see all the, what's been done behind the scenes and they don't need to, but chief majors, you, trustee Nordhook with our first field trip down to Portage and then members Shipley and, um, Treasure Pierce on that Public Safety Committee have just made this supervisor super happy because I completely trust you guys and it's a pleasure to just watch what could be a huge problem, being our biggest capital improvement project to date, just coming in fantastically, so if there's anything you need from the board, please continue to reach out, but otherwise you couldn't, you guys have done a fantastic job.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Was there a motion?
Shipley makes the motion to, uh, award the construction manager services to Triangle.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, for the award for construction manager services for fire station number one to Triangle, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
One, one request, chief, would you let us know when the lease gets signed from the airport?
Should be September twenty seventh, right? Oh, thanks. Item one zero four, authorization for Foster Swift to execute engagement agreement with Plant Moran for financial audit, this comes per a previous board action, uh, township legal counsel has recommended authorizing Foster Swift to execute the engagement agreement with Plant Moran on the township's behalf, set forth in the terms in the memo provided, and we have tonight Ms. Laura, or excuse me, Leslie Addoo, uh, on behalf of Foster Swift to answer any questions or provide any information.
Thank you Supervisor Lessbrun, yes, I'm here tonight, um, I did meet with, uh, the proposed, uh, financial auditor from Plant Moran who is also here tonight, um, anybody has any questions for her, uh, but just to kind of summarize, uh, the research we did to, uh, determine a, an appropriate individual and, and firm to assist us in this financial audit, uh, we did receive several positive recommendations and reviews of Plant Moran, uh, they have experience working with many municipalities in similar circumstances, um, Michelle in particular came very well regarded by colleagues of us as well as professional, um, consultants of ours, uh, as I've indicated in the memo to you, um, from Mike, but also from me, um, the, uh, the engagement will involve reviewing several different topics that, specific issues that the board had requested, uh, potential review of at your meeting on July twenty eighth, uh, specifically, uh, the review of certain purchases of hotspots, um, expenses incurred for the remodeling of the new administration building, um, CAREZAC funding, uh, expenditures, as well as the, uh, certain payments made to select vendors from back to two thousand and fourteen, um, like I indicated in the memo, the, uh, Plant Moran uses a blended hourly rate of two hundred and ninety dollars an hour, which, uh, essentially is what they charge most public entity clients, uh, to keep it consistent, so there's not discrepancies within billing timekeepers for various different hourly rates, obviously it's difficult for us to predict the cost of this, um, given that we don't know the number of transactions and records that might need to be reviewed as part of this audit, uh, we estimate somewhere between twenty to thirty thousand dollars, uh, we would enter the engagement agreement with Plant Moran as Foster Swift on behalf of the township and it would be a, uh, pass-through cost to the township, so that's how the engagement agreement would be structured. and it would be a pass-through cost to the township. So that's how the engagement agreement would be structured. I also indicated in the memo that Plant Moran does provide the opportunity of periodic assessments and evaluations of where they're at, to give the township some ability to assess costs and make sure that we're keeping, keeping tabs on how much is, work has been done and what might need to be done to continue the proceeding with the audit. But there will be the opportunity to have periodic updates, however often the board would like, be it weekly, monthly, quarterly, to assess the progress and how much has been, in terms of costs, how many costs have been expended to date. So happy to answer any questions that the board may have about Plant Moran or Michelle McHale Adams, who like I said, is also here tonight as well. If you have any questions for her, her experience, she is a partner at the firm. She is in the Grand Rapids office and like I said, has a lot of experience working with municipal entities in similar circumstances. So yes, thank you.
Just a brief description of the difference between a normal audit and a financial audit?
So the financial audit will entail reviewing financial transactions and records associated with these specific issues that the board has identified as potential areas of concern. This is going to be done on an independent basis, of course. Plant Moran will be hired as a third party to review the records so that it's done, you know, in a, in a non, like I said, an independent basis. So does that answer your question or separate from a, separate from a regular audit or this, like I said, this is a specific audit related to four particular issues that the board were, had concerns regarding expenditures.
Regular audit will do a sampling of various financial issues.
Yes, this audit would be specifically tailored to reviewing records related to these types of transactions. So it would be a targeted audit, not a general review of, of all financial records of the township.
We also want to make sure that the process was, that we, part of the reason to go with Foster Swift in conjunction with Plant Moran is to make sure that we, the processes were followed, that public funds and the board's directions were followed. So it's kind of a joint.
Correct. Part of that, correct. Part of the evaluation will be to ensure that expenditures were made consistent with board approval. And if it wasn't, what, what expenditures were not and what ways that we can improve on that process in the future. Yes.
Do you know if Plant Moran was already involved in an audit through the county of our COVID funds?
I am not aware of that. Michelle may have a, an understanding of that.
I understood our COVID funds had already gone through an audit.
I am not aware that Plant Moran audited your PPP funds. I certainly can check that, but I'm not aware of that.
I don't, I don't think they were PPP funds. They were COVID funds that we received through the county.
Okay.
And I believe the county audited us already for that.
Not, not under this, no.
Well, did they, did we not?
Audit's a pretty general word and it's a really, a cursor review of the overall county is not the same as a forensic audit that specifies exactly how we spent the money in detail. This is following up on that resident, well, multiple residents over multiple meetings. And that, I haven't seen anything that comes close to a detailed analysis of how Cascade Township spent at a county level.
So I would beg to differ. We spent a lot of time, we had to provide Plant Moran details on line item details, on everything we spent and invoices and everything we spent, that was all sent to them back in March. That was part of the process.
Well, then it'll be a quick review because what we've looked at, that was our subpoena request or response to our subpoena, there's some questions that that doesn't comply with how the board ordered it to be spent. So whether or not it falls under a general PPP appropriate expenditure is not the same as exactly if we complied with how the board requested those funds or ordered those funds be spent. So it's apples and oranges. Plant Moran does a lot of things, but you gotta consider what lens you're looking through. And this is to make sure that public funds were appropriated per the board's recommendation. And that's a separate question that hasn't been addressed yet. And we owe it to the residents. Once this shadow is cast, we owe it to get it done and be thorough about it.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, to kind of coattail on, on your comment there. Yes, we've had several residents and groups express concerns and that's why last month, the board said, let's go ahead with this.
Yeah, it's already passed. That's the other thing. That's a question, that literally is a question. We already passed this. This is a follow-up, just to execute the agreement that the board resolution unanimously, unanimously passed on July 28th. So you can't go back and it's only fair to the people that are under the microscope possibly to get it wrapped up and to follow through. And it's also only fair to the people whose money that we're entrusted with spending that we follow through. So.
This board and this township has already been accused
Yep.
by numerous different groups and different people of lack of transparency.
Yes.
If anybody attempts to shut this down for this measly little portion of $20,000 to $30,000, which is a hell of a lot less than what we pay some attorneys
Absolutely.
or some planners, you can expect to have this room packed with irate citizens demanding transparency. And now we're reneging it.
A financial audit, that the state mandated annual financial audit where we get glowing reviews, doesn't ever mention employee appreciation gifts, which is 101 inappropriate. Public funds for public purposes only. So we owe it to the people under, to the staff or the township level, but also to the residents. And that stuff doesn't come up under a state audit or a county PPP audit. It sounds like you're, you're trying to throw a wrench in the process that the board has already approved.
I was not at that board meeting, so I'm asking questions now. I think the, as a member of finance, we did have our PPP, our, our COVID funds audited and we did designate where they were gonna be spent. And that was in December, I think, or November of 2019. And they were spent exactly how the finance committee and the board agreed to have them spent.
That might be a question that we can let Plant Moran and Foster Swift look at. Because when I looked at the 88-page subpoena request, I don't agree with that statement, but I hope I'm wrong. Let's just let them do their jobs.
I just think it's necessary we do this, get it done. One of the residents used the word widespread corruption.
Yep.
I just want to cut that in the bud.
Ken, I couldn't agree more with you.
Is there a motion or further discussion?
I just wanted to throw in a few points. I, I think we're gonna needlessly spend $20,000 to $30,000. I don't think we need to do it. I think there's false accusations. I look at this, this expense incurred for remodeling the administration building. I dug into that in detail. We have a letter from, from Progressive AE on exactly what transpired. Ben has provided the documentations, the payment, the 6742 certificate for payment, design build project and all the costs. So I, I think we can get this done for a lot less than $20,000. I understand the desire to have this done, but we've already had it audited. I think the CARES funds by the county, our AP process has been reviewed by our accounting firm. Our accounting firm is fine with it. I trust our accountants. I think it's a poor expenditure of our money, but if this is gonna put this all to bed, then I should hope that we can do this for a lot less than $20,000. I would, at $300 an hour, I would think that we would have a lot of residents coming in saying, why are we spending $300,000 for things that the finance committee or we ought to be able to look up ourselves? So if we're gonna vote this to get it done, then I, I think we should look at all the existing documentation that we already have to make this as short a process as possible.
Tom, you're, you're absolutely right. And I think that they will take all the existing documentation and streamline their hours and, and their program.
I just want to make sure that it's a, it's in conjunction with Foster Swift because the part of the issue is the process, our process, that the board is properly informed to make the decisions and then that our decisions are actually followed through on. So we're entrusted with making sure that public funds are used appropriately. This $20,000 to $30,000 price estimate pales in comparison to the amount of funds that are under question here. So as far as it goes to make sure that this township runs smoothly moving forward and complies with all the laws, I look forward to it and I appreciate your willingness to participate.
If I may add one comment, that we do really value that cost benefit. I, I appreciate your comment. I would not know if another group audited that we have to maintain the independence and the separation of our work. So I just don't have access to all of the documents. It's, it's, for lack of a better term, it's not a free-for-all. We have very strict guidelines so that there's mandatory independence and confidentiality.
When you do these, who's your main interface? Would it be the township manager?
It could be. We would work through Foster Swift because our engagement would be Foster Swift, but we would be talking with the various folks that work here at the township.
So Ken, as you're, going back to your comments, what you're saying is that you would want to go through this in hopes that we can narrow the focus or shorten the timeframe, I should really say, shorten the timeframe because we've got some of the background work already done and then be done with it.
I think everyone shares that hope, but I think it's most important that we get it done right.
So, and what's the, the end result? The end result is that we find out, whatever we find out in these four issues, is it? I'm just trying to put the focus on it so we focus our costs. Is the focus on these four issues?
Focus on these four. It's not a fishing expedition.
No, it's not a fishing expedition. We're not, we're not allowed to do a fishing expedition with our licensing and, and our certifications. It is very specific.
Because from what I've seen, number two at least, the expenses incurred for the remodeling administration building, that can be done in probably a half an hour to an hour, simply because we've got the documentation already. That one I know for sure.
We just had another invoice come in on that building for the HVAC system that was never completed until this week.
This is as much as process question.
That should have been done. That's why the lobby was 118 degrees all summer because it didn't have the proper controls that was put on. We still don't have a handicap accessible front door.
And it's September. I don't understand.
As required by law.
We're, we're a public municipal building. How do we, how are we not ADA compliant? And how, did Progressive miss that? That doesn't make any sense.
Ma'am, you said you do at Plant Moran, different groups do different audits. So there may be a group at Plant Moran that already audited that CARESAC funding. Is that what is possible, right?
It is possible. Certainly. It sounds like that is the case.
If that has been done, and the manager said it has been done, and I believe too that it has been done, then that would be eliminated.
It wouldn't be.
No.
And I'll tell you why.
This is.
Yes, if I may.
No.
So that would mean that the county engaged Plant Moran to look at that
Yes.
documentation. I am not allowed to just go get the information that was provided during that engagement with the county. I can receive all of the information that was sent over to them from whoever sent that here, but I don't have, I'm not, I don't have the report unless it's publicly given. I don't have that audit report. And I think you're, the request, as I understand it, is to drill down a little bit further regarding how those monies were spent and really looking at the invoicing and doing a bunch of other analysis, basically.
Great, thank you.
I was gonna say something.
Then you. I just wanted to point out that I'm not debating whether or not the handicap access to Township Hall is important or not. In fact, I think it does, but it's not an ADA requirement.
How come we don't have the, wait, so we're not required to have handicap access?
We're not required to have the push button automatic door opener.
Was that on the original?
Requirement and no, it was not on the original design.
Makes it harder for those residents that are coming in. It would have been very nice to have.
We can still add it. We can still add it. Probably should. Matter of fact, I would recommend there's a, there's a county, not to change topics here, but disability group that, that can, that goes into buildings and like they did for us, for Peace Park, to make recommendations for handicapped accessible. So I would recommend that we consult with them and let them come through our building. But that's a separate topic.
Can we keep on subject?
Yeah.
Yep. Sorry, Ken.
Shipley makes a motion to authorize Foster Swift to execute engagement agreement with Plant Moran for financial audit.
Do you put a cap on that, John?
$30,000.
I'll second that.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook, to authorize Foster Swift to execute the engagement agreement with Plant Moran, subject to the, for the financial audit, subject to the terms set forth in Foster Swift's September 16th, 2021 independent auditor memo and currently with a cap of $30,000. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater. Now Supervisor Les Brants.
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you both for coming tonight.
Can I ask one other question? Who do you report to in your findings? Do you go through Foster Swift?
We do go through Foster Swift, yes.
And they decide whether to communicate with us or not?
We, we certainly would communicate it to the board. It just depends on how, what, how, in what nature the, the information is communicated, made public, et cetera. So, but yes, of course, it would be communicated back to the board.
Based on previous activities in the township, would the findings of your report be FOA eligible? Because you, actually your report, you're being hired by Foster Swift, so they're not FOA eligible.
That's correct. That's correct. Thank you.
Item 105, 2021, findings from member McDonald as discussed in prior board meetings as quote best practices, end quote. How can we define and execute more effective township governance? Review of potential board education and training or workshops focused on more effective township governance. Trustee McDonald?
Thank you Supervisor. Um, we've talked all summer long about what are best practices for townships, particularly a charter township and our situation. So really where this came down to is trying to understand what we could do to follow best practices or to learn. I went to multiple sources. One is the Township Governing Academy, which is conducted by the Michigan Township, Michigan Township Association. They have five steps for accreditation. We could all go through, you know, different law firms, including Foster Swift offer education. There's an MSU Extension Government and Public Policy Team and that even includes training on parliamentary procedures, but they could come in and do things. There is an organization called Fahy Schultz, Versace and Rhodes. They offer workshops at the township level, but where I think we really hit on a gem is I talked with a gentleman named Larry Merrill and he's an independent consultant, 67 years old. He's the former executive director of the MTA for 39 years. Larry really understands township government, county government, public policy. He's worked, I talked with him, he's worked with a lot of boards to do training and development, which is what we're looking for. He works with many different kinds of governments, including large urban communities and smaller communities. And some of the things he does are visionary planning, establishing policies and procedures, which I think is really important, dealing with contentious issues, rules of engagement and all the things that, that we've talked about. So in talking about this with him, it really led to, you know, what are your issues? He had kind of asked us about. I said, well, we have various levels of experience in the board. I mean, Jim's been on the board for about 20 years. Sometimes we don't see eye to eye on how to run the township, but you know, we're, we've come together more. And he talked about what's the desire to follow good processes and getting information. And we said, these are the kind of things that we're looking for. So we've had some contention and what he does is says, you know, you can do best practices or I can teach classes on best practices, but what's your real purpose? Is it to learn best practices? And of course, we, any of us can go online like I did and learn best practices. But I said, really what we're trying to do is strengthen the board and be more effective. And so he said, we have two options. One, you can take classes. There are classes on better governance, best practices, et cetera. But he said, there's also a two-step process that he has done for many communities. And I really like this. And the. And I really like this. And the first step is he does a board review. So he, he talks to each one of us individually and says, hey, what do you see? What do you like? What issues do you see, if any, in your township? What's your vision? Because what he's trying to do is help us more effectively find out our values, our vision and our mission as a board for the township. So the first thing he does, he just works with us one-on-one, calls us, talks to us, finds out what are your issues? What would you like to see? What would you not like to see? What are your policies? And then the second thing he does is he kind of holds a retreat, and I call it really a functional workshop where we all get together and we review our values and our mission and what we all think we want to do to be a more effective governing body. So his real deliverable could be a class or workshops, we could get through a number of different sources, or this two-step process. One, gather from each of us individually what we think are issues or what we'd like to learn about best practices. And then two, bring us all together to say, how do we implement those? And how do we implement policies, procedures, understand our roles and how we should function? And so with that, I'd kind of like to make a motion that I just seek a proposal from Larry Merrill and because I don't know, and let him present to us what he thinks we could do to be a stronger board.
I think that's a little premature. This was kind of sprung on the board with absolutely no background information. We didn't have any way to analyze anything. We didn't even know what was coming up. So to have this on the agenda, I just think it's premature, and especially we pay good money, taxpayer money already for the, this guy basically is a former MTA executive. MTA, we pay them good money to make sure they're up to date on all the issues. They have unlimited amounts of classes. They've always been extremely helpful when I've reached out to them. And perhaps we can have staff provide all of us to make sure we have all the up-to-date information.
How many classes have we gone through so far this year?
As a group? I don't know. I've, they have been fantastic. Not as many with COVID, but it's an unlimited membership, is my understanding. Why would we go more taxpayer money to pay someone who's not even up to date as much?
Miss Supervisor, may I make a recommendation that since trustee McDonald has already kind of tiptoed into the swamp, perhaps you could get some more information like time and expenses?
Yes.
That we're talking about what he would recommend and bring that back to the board next meeting. So a simple motion here to table this until next meeting when Tom has an opportunity to bring more information.
That's all I want to do is get more information and see what this might cost.
So a motion to table by trustee Shipley? Any other comments or questions?
Well, isn't it a motion to get more information?
No, it was a motion to table.
Because we're not doing anything.
Supervisor Les Prince, actually the correct, and I'm sorry to correct you.
Oh, this is good. We need this.
I just learned this at my little retreat that I went to. Tabling means that you wait until the end of this meeting. Postponing means that you wait until the next meeting or a further date. So.
Was that an MTA seminar that you learned that?
No, it was Clerks 101. M A M C.
You're doing a good job. Thank you.
Hey, thanks Supervisor. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to, I just, I just take the minutes and I see Mr. Maryland right here.
That's good best practices.
Giving me a thumbs up. Okay, so just, I know words don't seem to matter, but they actually do. So.
It's interesting. We're basically starting this strategic planning process where we are involving the community and we're soliciting feedback from the community and we're in the beginning of stages it. So basically to make sure that at the board level, the staff level, all the committees and commissions, that we're aligned with what residents want and residents are the people who vote us. So I don't really care what the board thinks is their vision. I just am more, I think we should focus on our strategic planning process that we're about to go out to the community. It seems kind of, it seems just, it seems like a red herring, especially when we've got unlimited MTA access that we pay for. But if you want to go for it, that knocks yourself out.
That, that we don't see eye to eye in the board.
That's what boards are for.
Do is strengthen the board and get us to be more in line with ourselves and the staff. Because we, because we, we just need to be more in line.
I don't think so. I think someone's a sore loser and doesn't like the changing guard, but the public spoke pretty clearly August 3rd, and I think some people just haven't caught up yet. But that's why the boards are set up with a seven members so that we don't have ties. Here's a split voter. We all represent the public. The public gets to vote and they vote of seven members. So the public gets to air it out and figure it out. And if they don't like it in three and a half years, they can change.
Oh, I'm sorry, John.
Oh, that's okay. And Jim has something he's been sitting here patiently waiting for too. Let it be known that I want to be aligned with my boss out there.
Me too.
Township, the township president. With all due respect to all of you, because Jim, I, I know that you've got wealth and knowledge. Ken is fantastic with numbers. Tom, you know various programs and people in the township. Yes, it'd be nice to all come to a conclusion together, but in the end of the meeting, I answer to that guy out there. And I don't give a damn whether I agree with you or not, and you shouldn't give a damn if you agree with me.
John, I agree with you, but I also think we, we, we don't agree on policies and procedures. And to run an effective government, we need to have policies and procedures.
I think you have a.
How do we get information? How do we share information?
What's been going on at the Governance Committee? That they meet once a month, the Governance Committee?
I'll defer to that.
You, you've motioned what, Tom? I'm, I'm sorry. What was your?
I guess I didn't need to motion. I could still go do it. I just wanted to go get additional information and a proposal for what, what this would cost to go through this. But if we don't want to go through it.
And rather than table it, I think we, you should do it just to find out what he would charge to do something like that and then bring it back to us. I don't, tabling it, we just put it off and I, I don't know that.
And no action is required.
Yeah, we're not making a commitment. That's right.
I think there should be something like that. You know, contact staff, what board members, what commission members, contact staff, all those things. There's got to be appropriateness for that. And I think it, we owe it to ourselves to be good citizens and answer to this. And since we ought to know what we can do and what we can't do in that regard.
If we're going to talk about best practices too, which is wonderful, and, and how we can make township governance more effective, it helped not to put broad personal items like this on the agenda with absolutely no background information so that the board has, has no way of preparing or considering it beforehand. This is all we saw. So if you want to go get more, that's great.
I didn't ask that we spend any money. I didn't ask that we do it. I asked that we just could get more information and be open-minded about it. I'm not saying.
But we didn't know what you were asking because none of the information that you shared, we didn't know what we were walking into, but if you want to do it.
Well, that's why, that's why I put in the agenda to explain it. To explain, we, any one of us can go Google best practices of a township and look things up and read about them. And we've all can go online and take an MTA class. I don't think any of us have, but we could. I haven't done it for a long time. So I was just looking for another alternative to say, what could make us more effective as a board? What could make us not have contention like this? Here's a guy with 39 years' experience who's been working with lots of different government bodies to help them make better decisions and to work harder for the public. All that I'm trying to do is cause a little more harmony and consensus, and that's all. And so that's all I wanted. And I really felt that this person could do that compared to the other things that I found.
Yeah, we've done a lot for, for best practices since, since I started in December. We no longer share the same attorney with the airport who we're about to enter into litigation with if they don't stop contaminating our river. We have an ex officio member on our planning commission now who was actually validly appointed there. And I look forward to continuing. We, we are making sure that we comply with the Open Meetings Act and don't deliberate behind the scenes in committees where the public has no, no opportunity to participate in. Employee appreciation gifts are a big no-no. That's number one and public funds go for public purposes. So I can, I look forward to continuing these best practice steps that we're moving towards. Hopefully we can all get along while doing it, but regardless, I like the direction we're headed.
I think, I think we're, if, if, when we lost Steve Peterson, who was, whether you liked him personally or not, was one of the most knowledgeable, experienced people in Cascade Township. And he left because he, he had felt very picked on. And I think there's probably other people on the staff who may feel that way too. That is, is a source, that is a problem. And so how can we do away with that so we don't lose more people and so that we can attract the best people to Cascade?
The Round Hill Subcommittee has been doing an absolutely fantastic job. Appreciate their hard work in the background. We've got really good residents. We're doing a lot of hard work.
I don't know if that has to do with anything, but.
When you gather some information on this thing, can you give a couple government agencies at ease?
Of course.
Work with so, for references that we can contact and that would be interesting. Thank you.
Can you also look at what we have and what we pay for as far as already with the MTA membership that the township pays for?
Yeah, but he, he's not with the MTA. He's independent. He's actually with an organization. I think it is the organization he's with. He, he's independent. He also works with Public Policy Associates, which is a national organization. So he is no longer with the MTA. He's independent and he's with Public Policy Associates.
So his career was long-term MTA executive now.
Thirty-nine years as an executive director of the MTA.
Now private consultant.
Right, and, and a member of the Public Policy Associates, which is a national organization. But I'll just get some further information. Cool.
Article 10, public comments. Any comments, whether on the agenda or not, please come to the podium if you're able. Otherwise, Ms. Brott can bring you the microphone.
Promise, Mr. Maryland.
Thank you. Couple of comments. I was going to comment on the last item. Just one brief one, which is you mentioned trustee McDonald, everyone but getting the input or information from what the citizens want. You wanted to work well on the board and with staff. I would encourage you also to think about working well with the citizens. Because we don't think the board or the staff has been responsive to us over the past number of years.
Craig, I disagree. We, we do care about residents and we listen to the residents. So don't, I, I wouldn't, I didn't say that at all.
Let's give him his three minutes.
Okay, second comment on certain financial items. On the town hall, I note that the Building Inspections Group, in looking at the budget, the amended budget for the second quarter, added $57,000 of additional expenses designated remainder of Township Improvement Project, which I take to be the town hall. Since they're paying roughly 32% of the overall cost of that renovation, I went and looked for the other 121,000. Couldn't quite find it in the rest of the changes. I did find HVAC expenses of 20,000. That was in the building and grounds budget. So the extra money is floating around in various budget items, not getting into the Township Hall renovation. So I think it's going to take more than 30 minutes for an auditor to really look through and find out all the places we've hidden money for the Township Hall renovation. I would also comment on that one, that I think Foster Swift, working with the forensic auditor, might under, might be able to explain to us how Progressive and Town Manager Swayze were able to say that the design plan approved in December, when we bought that building, would be satisfactory for, at $2 million for current staff and expected normal growth in the staff. And then find out eight months later that the same two parties were saying, oh no, the minimum we can spend is a significant amount more. Were they lying at the first one they did or the second time? Don't know. Um, second, Assistant Town Manager fast pay is being subsidized by the police fund. I finally now understand where under revenues into the general fund, there's a line item for transfer from blank. Been there for a few years, from blank. It is in fact $40,362. Then I looked and found in the expenditures in the police fund.
Go ahead.
Page 19 of our financial material, hand numbered at the bottom of the page, exacts transfer to other fund. Doesn't even say the general fund. Transfer to other fund of the exact same amount, 40,362. So if that is transparency, we got a lot of improvement to make in what is transparency. I take it that is in fact the portion of Assistant Town Manager fast pay that's being paid out of the police fund, which is funded through a millage. And I wonder if in fact she spends half her time doing police materials covered by the police millage fund. Maybe she is. I don't know. I don't know how it's in, how it is in fact confirmed. Also, I would note that the Township Manager and Assistant Township Managers' compensation and expenses are of course under the Township Manager and Assistant Manager section of our budget. Oh no, we don't have that section. It's under the supervisor's accounts. So we're not even very forthcoming on that one. And finally, in looking at, no, I've spent my time, so I will leave it at there. I could, I have several more, but I will not raise them at this point.
Sure, thank you.
Hi, Ken Vanderkolk. It looks like we maybe bought a park. Is there a parks director in this township?
No.
So now that we maybe bought some property, we're going to send it out to somebody to design a park?
Nope. We haven't, no. Well, premature to say, but.
Okay. I would like a simple little thing like two handicap kayak launchers to be put in this township, one above the dam and one below the dam. We bought a big piece of property on Thornhill River Drive. It just sits there empty. We could put a kayak launch on there or a fishing access or something down below there. Above the dam, there's a portage on there and it's dangerous to walk on. Try and put a kayak in there is, is dangerous. So if we don't have a director, who do I see? Is there somebody who's in charge of parks or is it just the guys who cut the grass? They go over there and they're going to design something?
We have a Parks Committee that was under the direction of our Community Development Director, Steve Peterson, who resigned last week and is no longer with us. We don't have a Parks Director, but our Parks Committee met this week and they're working very hard. We met with the ADA Parks Director who came to our meeting. And I think we're all looking at how best to serve Cascade with an opportunity to reorganize and make sure it's efficient. So you've asked very good questions that we don't have short answers to, but.
I mean, we should have a Director of Parks or something that you can go sue to and, and, and put a request to or something.
It's good timing with the strategic planning process too. You're asking good questions. I've asked the same ones in my head, still there.
There's a property down here on Thornhill River Drive. Is it just going to sit there or are we going to designate that's going to be a park? Or is it just going to sit there vacant forever and ever and ever?
Are you talking about the, the one on the river?
The one on the river.
Andrew Swayze, why don't you put that item on the agenda for the next meeting? At least we can have a public discussion about it. It keeps coming up.
They put up a fence. West Black Top of Peace there, we'd make parking, put a few steps down to the river there and I can go fly fishing or I can put my kayak in there. Otherwise, why did we, why did we buy this property? Somebody got it in their head that we had to have this property. The board approved it. They spent the money on it. Let's do something with it and let it just sit, just sit there empty. That's what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. You're going to make the Tom, Ms. Trustee McDonald's best practices argument look really good. Go ahead, Mr. Maryland.
An additional comment on the Round Hill situation. And not to get into details on the Round Hill situation, but what has been perfectly clear from our investigation to date, and we're just getting started with the more in-depth investigation of that situation. But that forgetting board processes, the basic work processes of the township are fundamentally very flawed. At least with regard to development. When you in 2016 have lawyers in a room and demand a letter of credit or a bond for specified amount of money and a year later, when work starts, you totally forget about it. That's a process flaw. That's because someone doesn't have a checklist or a computer with an ability to check off those things. So I think what this township needs significantly as well as board peace, hopefully, and common direction is a real process management review of how decisions are made and how we avoid losing things in the white spaces between lines on our board chart.
Craig, I completely agree. By the way, that's the, this gentleman helps us do that. That's one of the things he helps municipalities do, is come up with the processes and the checklist. So I didn't communicate that, but that's one of the things that, well, I was excited. Madam Supervisor, can I make a comment to, sorry, Ken, about, about the property?
Sure.
First of all, I have used Castle Park as both a fishing place and a kayak put in. So we, there is a place to put in kayaks and canoes at Castle Park. I've used it before. So the property that you're talking about, I moved here in the nineteen eighty-five and there was some discussion at the time at the board level about, and there were, there were right now where the dam is in Castle Park, there were nine or 10 homes there. And there were people talking about acquiring those homes potentially as a park. I live just down the street at 3044 Thornapple River Drive, which is up from the Cascade Dam, just four or five houses. It got torn down last year and he's building a nice big new house there. So I was really interested in that area. And they had talked at that time about making that area into a park and extending that park across the street where the Sheldon's Cleaners was and those homes along that way. And to make a long story short, nobody believed this could ever be hap, this could happen over, you know, a 30, 40, or 50-year period. But we got a big, the township had a vision to put a park in, which is where Castle Park is, and extend it to the other side over, over a period of many years, like 40, 50 years. Then the township, the history is Leslie Tassel was a a good donor and he donated a million dollars to the township that accelerated us, not me, but the township to buy property, have the right of first refusal for all those homes. In addition, the government FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, had some requirements on the township that if the township could ever buy those properties below the dam because of safety reasons that we, the township, should buy those first. So the point is between some of the requests from, from the federal government because of the dam location and the desire, the vision of the board back in the eighties to put a park in there and then the donation from Leslie Tassel, all of a sudden we had this money and we went to the homeowners, the township did, and bought these homes and turned it into a park. The long-term vision was to, way before I was on the board or any of us were on the board, the long-term vision was to extend that park for Cascade Township for the use by the residents to the other side of Cascade Road. So what we were trying to do, I think as board members have come on over the years, is to acquire properties on that side if we could, so we could extend Castle Park potentially someday to, to, to create this long-term vision, to actually execute it. So that was the reason several years ago, when those two houses came up for sale, that that property was bought with the vision to hopefully have something, a full boardwalk along the length of that set of properties in the township for public use for the residents. So again, we didn't have the million-dollar donation from something like Mr. Tassel to buy those properties. And then, of course, the bike shops there now and, and for birds. But we have been able to get Tuffy Muffler, which I think all the residents would like to see go away and have become public space. So that, that vision, there's a vision over a long period of time and unfortunately it just takes time. So that's, I think, some of the reasons that we've been looking at these properties such as Tuffy Muffler, such as some of the ones on the other side of Cascade Road.
One, we bought the property, but the intention of making it a park. Let's do it.
Yep.
Why are we, why are we wasting time?
Yeah, and, and, and we appreciate your comments here. Yep.
Just quickly address.
Where is the, the whole, is there a parks department that we have to talk to or the board?
Probably just, probably right now it's just the limitation of the physical size, but parking in that, that small area and especially since you can do kayaks and canoes on the other side.
Jim, you want to add to that?
I just want to say, let's get a sign, a picnic table and a trash can on that lot.
But that's something that the parks committee is, 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 is working on.
There is no director? There is not going to be a director or you have to come up here and argue with or you're saying, no, we don't want this or it's not going to happen?
No, we're looking at it. It's just, it's hard to answer right now because there's been a Cascade's kind of been, what's the word when you, it's stagnant for a long time. And so there was a, we're looking at it. I hear what you're saying. I think there's a need. We just want to make sure that the residents are behind whatever the board is deciding. Any other comments virtually?
We, yes, we have two. Scott Van Solkema, I'm going to unmute him.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. Thank you. Scott Van Solkema, 2570 Orange. I'm just curious, how much of our tax dollars goes to Forest Hills Public Schools? Does anybody know that off the top of their head?
Yeah, big chunk.
Yeah.
Look on your.
Do we have a?
No, I'm talking about a total for all of Cascade Township. How much do we put into the school?
I couldn't tell you. I don't know, but
Okay.
we can get back to you on that.
All right. Well, my question is, do, is there any way to have any pull with the school board? I mean, looking at your board meeting packets, they're anyway, anywhere from 200 to 400 pages sometimes. And everything is itemized and detailed in regards to what your money, what you guys are spending. I believe you guys approved spending like six and a half million dollars, if I'm remembering correctly. And, and all the checks and things are itemized. Whereas the, the last school board meeting, they only, they spent eight and a half million dollars. And it is very, very extremely generic. You know, granted, like not quite half of that was for obviously for employees and payroll and stuff like that. But the other was 302 checks totaling four and a half million dollars. And I was just wondering if there's any way that the township board has any sway or, or any suggestions or anything that, that you guys can do to show the Forest Hills Public School Board how, you know, how board package should actually be. I mean, I've asked, and I know a lot of people have, other a lot of other people have asked about transparency from the board, from the school board. I mean, there, there's sometimes their board packets are like 10 pages long. And they had one, just for instance, that they wanted to spend almost $200,000 on physics and chemistry pro, physics and chemistries program. And there's really no justification. We're looking at your board packet. You guys justify everything that you spend, correct? You know, on just even the, the pathways that was getting replaced just the two meetings ago, which I did email you guys about, which I was glad to be heard. They guys have four different quotes and everything was itemized and detailed. Their stuff is not. And it just does a huge lack of transparency from our public schools versus our local municipalities, which feed them a lot of their money that they spend of taxpayer dollars. So that was my only question and comment. And I don't know if there's anything that you guys can do, but it, it would be helpful to look into or possibly, I don't know if you guys can pressure them or if that's overstepping your bounds. I don't know. But just, just something to consider or maybe investigate.
Short answer is no.
Right.
No. Well.
If the township doesn't pay taxes to the Forest Hill School District, it collects taxes for Forest Hill School District.
Yep. Okay.
We really don't have, we really don't work, we've got our own. Yeah, it, it's all kind of regulated by the state and for, we don't, we don't work with them really on anything other than.
Giving them money.
We collect their money.
Yeah, nice. Okay. Well, I just thought I would ask, but thank you very much. And I do, I am glad that you guys bought the, are going in with that agreement on the church on the hill. And also that you are going to bring up the 2,800 and I forgot what the other parcel number is on Thornapple River for the next meeting. So I, I would like to either see it be made a park or, you know, we, having the one park on the Cascade Road sounds like a great idea. Tuffy Muffler should be gone when that guy Bobby decides to retire finally. But I think that's how as far as the park should go, just by two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor, we have one more.
Okay.
Lori Gottlieb.
Welcome, Ms. Gottlieb.
Hi there. Lori Gottlieb, 7100 Cascade Road. I have a couple of questions if the board doesn't mind answering them. You mentioned that your strategic plan, you guys are, you have that underway. Where do you get the community involvement? Are there forms, surveys? How do you get the community's input to make your strategic plan for the township?
Pretty soon and within the next month or two, the, everyone in the township will be mailed a introductory questionnaire. And that's the first start. And that'll also include a website where people can go to, where residents can go to, to answer the questionnaire and give feedback. That's the beginning step. Then we will also host a series of meetings that the public is welcome to, public residents, businesses. We also have, but we're, but the postcard hasn't gone out yet. We're in the beginning stages. We have a an advisory committee. It's, it's meeting right now. It meets Friday at 10 o'clock here, right in the Wisner Center in person and the public is wel, not in person. Oh, this one's at the township hall, I think. The public is still welcome to attend, but basically, and it's all about how we can reach as many residents as possible. So it was at the Wizard Center in the past. This Friday it's at the township hall. But we encourage people to come. And I know it's a little bit premature, but you should be getting a postcard shortly. Mr. Merlin, do you have anything to add?
There's going, there is going to be. The focus so far has been on maximizing front-end citizen involvement and input. And then continuing that input throughout the process as well. So even this Friday, there will be comments made with regard to the survey and then meetings to maximize return on the survey upfront. So that citizen input, this will be a strategic plan, hopefully driven by citizen comment and input.
And manager Swayze, we should have an update at the next meeting because the board is still the one responsible for the strategic plan. And I think it's probably past due where the board gets an update and is allowed to input and over the process.
That was, that was talked about at the last meeting. So the, the purpose of this meeting coming up will be to make a recommended process to the full township board for consideration.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I think that's, that's spot on. It's wonderful. My second question is for parks and recreation. Do they not only maintain parks and public area, but also the river and the water?
Not right now, no. But we do not have that right now. I will be looking into kind of a something like that advisory committee that kind of focuses on more the river.
Okay. So right now the river isn't covered by any department. Okay. So the township has not spent any money in river maintenance or upkeep?
Not that I'm aware, but others on here would know more.
Okay. The residents, how do we submit nominees for the, for the SAD?
I would say, what do you say? Email manager Swayze directly, probably.
So my plan is to circulate a simple application form to all the members of the SAD, so we can get everybody equal chance to apply.
Perfect.
So the application will be mailed to everyone's home or is it going to be on your website?
We'll be mailing it.
You'll be mailing it. Okay. And then we all have how long to get that in?
Hasn't been decided yet.
Okay. Cause in the past.
Miss turnaround should be fairly soon because the they need to talk to possible companies, I think by December 15th. So.
Okay. And then my final one, and thank you for taking all these questions. How does a citizen get an agenda item on the township board agenda? How, what's the process for that?
Manager Swayze, I don't think there's a, tell me if I'm wrong. I don't think there's a formal process, but emailing or calling us, you can call any of us on the board. You can call me, manager Swayze. We've been hearing a lot about pathway repairs. That's a big one. Just be a squeaky wheel.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It doesn't look like there's anyone else who's raised their hand.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Rizzi.
Apparently I wasn't quick enough on the draw earlier and virtual people got ahead of me, which is okay. So a couple of quick notes that I just took here during the meeting. You guys were talking about the township hall construction job earlier and I hear all sorts of different numbers. But I thought when you guys had the presentation in this room at the beginning of that project, that the slide that was up said the cost of the project was between two and 2.5 million dollars. And I thought somebody, I thought actually Craig said it was $2 million, but I think the slide said 2.5. I could be wrong, but I thought that's what it said. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. The other thing I wanted to bring up, just an observation. And you know, when Gerald Ford became president, he was faced with the dilemma of Richard Nixon to consuming all of his time. And so ultimately he pardoned him. And as I sit here today and have watched your meetings for a while now, I just want to say that I hope our township board doesn't get too consumed on the past, that they're not focused enough on what's happening today and tomorrow. So just, just throwing that out as an observation to make sure that you don't get too tangled up in, you know, we have good process and good ideas on how we do things moving forward. The other thing I wanted to say is that I really like the new timer over here and I hope that we, that maybe I can get educated on how to use that at the planning commission, because it would be great. The only flaw I've noticed is that it really should go negative when it hits zero. And I don't see it doing that. So I, I think that should be a change. But it would be very helpful to planning commission. I certainly could use it, particularly when member Merlin is speaking. And then the other item here.
His wife asked the same question.
Okay. The other item that was mentioned a second ago was about kayak access at the dam, handicap access. They do have handicap kayak access at Grand River Riverfront Park in Lowell Township at their, at their access. But as far as the river goes, the Cascade Thornapple River Association years ago offered to purchase a dock to be installed at the dam. It didn't have kayak access. But the idea was for a safer access point there. And unfortunately, at that time, I believe it was manager Cravens. And then again, I think it was brought up manager Cousins. They, both of those boards turned down that potential donation. But the idea was to enhance that access better and also provide boaters a spot to park for a half hour so they could walk down and get an ice cream cone or a pizza or something in the village. And there was, I thought it was a neat idea. I guess I'm out of time, so I should probably go sit down. But I had a couple of other items I was going to mention. The process discussion, real briefly, I, I think that there are certain aspects of that that I would like as a chairperson to, to know more about. But I also think you should see about sharing in your expense of that with the school board, because they, they could use some help with that.
Thank you. We need to make sure that all the boards and commissioners have access to the MTA website if that's allowed under our membership. Article 11, manager comments.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Article 12, board member comments. Trustee Shipley.
I've got a couple of things. First of all, I always stand up and thank you guys for coming and everybody out there in electronic land the same way. Couple of things, I'm going to stand standing. I've had numerous questions and complaints from personnel on the condition of the pathways. I can't answer them. Ben, can I get a, a copy of that map of our proposed repairs of pathways this year? That way I can at least answer our, our constituents a little bit better. Secondly, I've heard it several times and Mr. Merlin, I think you even brought it up. Our organization lets things fall through the cracks. I am recommending and I'd like it to be on the. I am recommending, and I'd like it to be on the, on uh, agenda for next month, that we talk about having a consultant that comes in and looks at our organizational chart, analyzes it, makes recommendations to the board how to fix a dam problems in the office. And this should be done before we hire any more people on board. Now, we know that Mr. Peterson's gone. In the past, we've talked about hiring an engineer. But before we do any of that, we need to know where we are, where we need to be. Um, included in that organizational chart and study should be a time study. In every organization I've been in, any time before we do a reversion, a revision of the organization, we look at a time study. Where do people spend their time? Do we need an assistant to an assistant to an assistant? I seriously doubt it. If we do, then we need to have a couple more titles, and they're not assistant to an assistant to an assistant. Um. Lastly, this is hot topic. Today, I ran into the previous chairman of the DDA. And his name is Dave. And Dave filled me in on some shit that's been happening. In September of not twenty fifteen, he wrote for the DDA board not to continue the bus service on Twenty-Eighth Street. We have been told as a board here that the DDA members unanimously wanted the bus system continued. I'm tired of lies. I'm tired of lies. When I gotta go out there and face our citizens and I tell them something that I think is true, and then I find out it isn't? Bullshit. We should all be ashamed. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've got something. Ben, at the last meeting, you kind of surprised us by telling us Steve resigned. I had the pleasure of serving all the time he was here, either on the zoning board, this board, or the planning commission. I think it would be very appropriate if you prepared a resolution of thanks uh, on behalf of the township for Steve's twenty-four years of service.
Is that something that will be brought up at the next meeting then for approval? The board needs to prove that before it goes out, because I've got some concerns.
And so do I.
You too.
I, I'm not gonna support that.
We've got really good staff and for generally, we've got great residents and we've got a great township. And it'll be all right. It won't ever be perfect because it's government and it's tax dollars, but it's kind of an, you've got a new inexperienced supervisor who doesn't handle public comments very well, and I apologize. But the goal is not to to just roll in the mud in the past at all. We just need a couple tweaks to just weaken, we, there's just so much more opportunities. Park strike, there's so much opportunity in Cascade. And it's frustrating because the process is slow, but it's not gonna take much, and we're so close. You just get a little more sunlight and some couple shifts and we are almost there. So the residents who've participated have been fantastic, and we just want to make sure that the board serves the residents and the staff serves the board. So once we get that squared away, we are, we're gonna be great.
Back to my resolution. Does that have to be voted on?
Yeah.
Okay, then I make a motion and.
No motion. This is just board comments.
Yeah, not making a resolution now.
You can put whatever you like on the agenda. That'd be great.
We'll put it on the agenda for next time. If you choose.
Be interested in some information from the planning.
We had this at the Planning Commission, and it was voted down.
It's too bad.
That's too bad.
No, it's not too bad. We're not gonna give us, we're not gonna give a bully a plaque. That's how we viewed it, so.
I, I have a different opinion.
Okay, well, then you can vote yes and we'll vote no. But, well, that's how it works.
I don't think we need a consultant. I think we need a referee.
But yeah, I would, I would agree with Mr. Shipley that we do need a consultant to come in and and review our process in the office and find out where we need people, where we can adjust schedules or or duties, and I think that'd be a good process, so.
This is the result of having a a board that just, a longstanding stagnant board, longstanding staff and a fat tax base. So if it's a little rocky as we smooth things out, it'll all work out. But there's a lot of tax money and a lot of opportunity in Cascade, and there was a lot of change that hadn't happened for a long time.
We still have board member comments?
Yep.
My final comment would be, this is the reason, and I think Larry Merrill is the type of consultant who could come in and look at our processes and where we need people and what we should be doing. But I think you can also bring back, I, I mean, I really, I, I regret that you say we have a stagnant board. We've had a stagnant board. I think the board has done a lot of very successful things over the years, uh, even prior to my time, prior to Jim's time. Uh, I think we've been very proud always in Cascade to have wonderful boards. I think when we use uh, language like stagnant board, it's very derogatory, and I don't think we're derogatory. And I think going after Steve Peterson, I think any employee who puts in twenty-four years uh, deserves some respect. Uh, people, people might not have agreed with his opinions. Alls he was doing was enforcing our ordinances, which is what he was supposed to do. But he did a good job. He was very knowledgeable. And it's just common courtesy usually when an employee spends that much time with somebody that you thank them. And I think it's a very small uh, piece of gratitude to to give them a thank you letter or whatever. So that's the kind of thing that I was talking about, maybe getting a little bit more on the same page in terms of just having a little more common courtesies and respect for each other, and that just goes a long way in life. So that that was my, my key point, but I think I I will talk with this Larry Merrill also about reviewing processes and how we need people, because that's one of the things that he specializes in. So I think it's a good idea, Jan.
Treasurer Pierce?
I can bring up something very controversial. As of September twenty-two, we've collected ninety-five point seventy-nine percent of the summer taxes.
Great job.
That's all I have to say.
Keep up the good work. Article thirteen, adjournment. Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Shipley.
Talking about setting the record straight. Sir, you were talking about the park on Thornapple River Drive. Know why that fence was put up there? To keep the public off. That was just after I came on in my first term here, and this board and the previous supervisor decided to put that fence up there to keep people off of that parcel. There is the truth.
Isn't that about safety?
No, ma'am, it was not. It was to appease the the neighbors next door.
That's true, to appease the neighbors next door. Because we told them when we bought the property, it would not be developed yet. And so in order to keep our word, that was why the fence was put up. We didn't have any plans at that time to put in a pocket park. That was an eventual, as Tom said, plan to develop that river frontage into a boardwalk, which we had hoped to maybe get a restaurant where Tuffy Muffler was, but that didn't happen. And if there had been a restaurant put in there to be able to eat and then take a walk down uh, to that the DeCosta property, it was the name of it. And we bought that with the intent of having that be the end point of a boardwalk. At some point, if we acquired the other houses along Thornapple River Drive there, then we intended to put a little pocket park, like you said, with a bench and a place for people to sit and recreate. But we did not intend to do that right away when we bought the property. So John is right. We put a fence up there because we told the people that were around there that still owned owned homes that we would not use that property at this time.
Which in my opinion was immoral. But that's past practice now. I won't talk about it.
It's funny, I um, during the campaign and other people had referred to the proposed Township Hall that two thousand sixteen, over those several years, that never went through as the Taj Mahal, and I always felt a little bad. But then I learned from uh, several staff members that the, the former board member also genuinely referred to it as the Taj Mahal. So then I didn't feel quite so bad because um, one, it's not a great term, but two, it was actually kind of a goal, so. The goals are still transparency, even if it's a little bit ugly. At least it's being aired out in public, not behind the scenes in committee meetings. Accountability, so it's all about having a process, not behind the scenes, just flush it under the rug, even though we're a million dollars or however, hundreds of thousands of dollars over budget. And then fiscal responsibility, because we have a lot of money in Cascade, and we have a lot of developers, and we owe residents good service. So with those three goals, I think the the financial audit and the different stuff we've gotten in the works is, is a great use of taxpayer money.
That case I'll support it.
Motion made by treasurer, or sorry, trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald's, adjourn, all in favor? Post. Thanks, everyone, for coming. We're adjourned.